I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keaton. Please be seated. So, Keaton, I have a couple of questions for you. Can you answer a couple of questions for us? What's your favorite subject in school?
Art and music.
Art and music. Very cool. And what do you want to do when you grow up, do you know?
Be a teacher.
You want to be a teacher? So, we have a sign-up card for you as you leave. Keaton, thank you so much for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You did a wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You have some friends and family with you? Would you introduce them to us, please?
That's my dad, that's my mom.
Do you have your principal?
That's my number-one teacher.
Please, please stand up. Well, Keaton, thank you so much for leading us in the pledge again. We appreciate it very much. And have a great school year, absolutely. So, this school board meeting of July 30th is called to order. And the first order of business is... Madam Superintendent, do we have your revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Item C8, minutes of the June 18, 2019 school board meeting, replace backup. Item C10, new administrators, add attachments. Item C52, Florida Educational Equity Act, annual update 2018-2019, add attachment. Item C59, remove educational-based services incorporated duplicate item. Item R63, administrative instructional recommendations, replace backup. Item R66, 2019-2020 mental health plan, revised item, add attachment. Item R70, 2019-2020 tentative budget and military rates, add attachment. Last but not least, item R72, 2019-2020 internal audit services plan, move to August agenda. That concludes the revisions for this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the July 30, 2019 school board meeting agenda as revised.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and second, and any discussion. So, the motion on the floor is approval, the acceptance of the July 30, 2019 school board meeting agenda as revised. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Madam Superintendent, we have some special recognitions.
Yes, we do. I would like to ask School Board Member Lori Cunningham to please step to the front for our special recognition. Next, I'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent Facilities and Operations Angela Usher to please come forward for a presentation.
Yes, good evening. It is my pleasure to recognize Mr. Troutman today. He has been such an advocate for the school district. In 2012, he was appointed to the Sales Tax Committee. He served as chairman, and he was so instrumental in getting the sales tax passed. He did so many talk shows, attended community meetings, fairs, public events, and so it is really a pleasure to honor him. We have a certificate here, and it says, "Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Ashley Troutman. In recognition of outstanding service, the Polk County Public Schools have sent Sales Tax Committee and his commitment to putting students first."
Mr. Troutman?
Wow, I didn't realize I did all of that. But I could not have done any of that stuff, any of those things, I should say, without the support of a very dedicated Sales Tax Oversight Committee. July of 2012, Ms. Kay Fields approached me after volunteering at her Girls Inc. Incorporated organization and asked me, "Hey, Ashley, would you want to serve on this Sales Tax Committee? It's a wonderful opportunity to be involved in our community and to give back. It's a great leadership opportunity." Had no idea that six years later, that I would be chairing the committee and asked to be an important advocate and a sounding, sound piece out in the community to tell the story, the good story of our school district and the importance that it is for us as community members to support it through our sales tax. If you look back in Polk County history, you always understand that, or you will understand, that it's always been upon us as community members here in Polk County to provide the resources that we need for our community. We can look at the city of Lakeland as example. Decades ago, when the electric companies would not want to bring electricity to our community, they decided to issue bonds for the city in order to raise the electric company. If you look back at, in 1916, I believe it was, Polk County offered a million-dollar bond so that we can drive the Dixie Highway system through our community. We've always, we've always took it upon ourselves to do what we need to support our community, and the community got behind us, ate, I think it was 70%, 60, 70% passing of our sales tax renewal, and that was a great win for our school district, especially in these critical times where we're in a unique environment when it comes to public funding of education. So, again, I think people like Dylan Daniels, that I got a chance to work with over the years, and I think people like Mr. Aldo Sett, I don't know if he's here or not today, Ms. Jody Miller, and a number of other people that worked tirelessly on that Sales Tax Committee to support what it is that we did. So, I did not do anything along, and I thank the board members for their advocacy as well throughout that last year's effort that we made. So, thank you for this recognition, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Dylan and his wife.
Anyone else you want to invite?
My wife and anyone from the Sales Tax Committee that's here.
Mr. Dylan? Pam, you want to come? You can come if you want. No? Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Troutman, for your continued support and dedication for Polk County Public Schools. Would Jeanette Crowley, Senior Coordinator of Strategic Partnerships, come forward to recognize the Needlework Guild of America program?
Thank you. The Lakeland Chapter of the Needlework Guild of America's annual campaign works with donors to buy uniforms and other clothing items that are provided to our students in need in the greater Lakeland area. Yesterday, the NGA sorted and gathered the new clothing items, preparing them for distribution to our schools. The NGA works with Bell's Outlet in securing items at a very reasonable cost. They raise nearly $80,000 annually, and their efforts this year have allowed them to purchase 11,000 articles of clothing. They've been doing this work since 1935. Marissa Green from the PR Department and Ben Rouge from the Hearth Program attended the distribution yesterday and saw firsthand how this operation works. They said it was an amazing opportunity to see our community business partners come together and help our students and our families. I want to say thank you to the Lakeland Chapter of the Needlework Guild of America for once again helping our students prepare for this upcoming school year. At this time, I'd like to have Paula Memes come forward and say a few words.
We want everyone to take a pair of socks as the socks make their way around. I'm Paula Memes, Representative from the, from NGA, formerly the Needlework Guild of America, and since 1935, back at that time, our members would sew clothing to give to schoolchildren in Polk County in the greater Lakeland area. At this time, we don't do that anymore, lest there be any questions. If you want to sew something, we'll be happy to take it and pass it out. But we have a small but mighty board. We also have 70 directors who, once a year, write all of their friends' and family letters, one letter, and we raise over $70,000, 80, 90 sometimes, it depends on the year, to purchase clothing. We are very grateful to Bell's Outlet for giving them to us at cost. It makes a significant difference for us. We say that we give out pride and self-esteem in the form of clothing because we know from the people who have come to our meetings to share with us that we have students who share underwear. We have siblings who will say to their guidance counselor, "It's not my day to wear it." We know that children come to school without socks, without belts. We know that, we know all of this, and we try to provide a new polo, new pants, underwear, socks, and a belt. And we do this with the greatest of heart for our most vulnerable students. Some of them will self-identify as, some families will self-identify as homeless, some do not, but that we know that our students have to come to school prepared and feeling good about themselves to do well. And it is with just amazing gratitude that we appreciate what you all do and what our employees in the schools do to help us empower our students to feel good about learning and being prepared to learn. The school board, actually, school employees, the courier system will come and help us distribute. So, we have really streamlined our efforts so that we can make sure that our volunteers are out there raising money and doing these things. And we just are excited to do this for our most vulnerable children. Thank you.
So, I have a certificate. So, if we could get everybody from the NGA up here so we could take a photo. I actually called to appreciate you all, and she said, "We don't do that."
Thank you again for your dedication, and that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Before I move on to the agenda, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Keaton Clark, the young man that led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, his father, Robert, is a teacher at Lake Albert Elementary School, and his mother, Erica, works here at the district. So, be remiss if I didn't thank them for their service to our school district. All right. So, at this time, I would invite anyone from the public who would like to speak to any item on the agenda to come forward and do so. Now, we'll have a public hearing related to policy updates and the budget a little bit later. If you'd like to speak to those items, you'll have an opportunity to do that a little bit later in the meeting. But if you'd like to speak to other items on the agenda, please come so, come forward and do so at this time. Okay? All right. So, we have three sets of minutes to approve. The first set of minutes are the minutes from the May 14, 2019 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion. The motion on the floor is approval of the minutes for the May 14, 2019 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second set of minutes are the minutes of the June 18, 2019 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion. So, the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes for the June 18, 2019 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last set of minutes to approve are the minutes of the June 18, 2019 school board meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion. The motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the June 18, 2019 school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Move for approval?
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion. So, motion on the floor is approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Madam Superintendent, we have some new administrators?
Yes, we do. We have quite a few for you this evening. Before I begin, I'd like to remind administrators, we want to get a group photo when we're done, so please do not run out after you have given your words to the board of recognition. First, I'd like to say, and I'm pleased to recommend, the appointment of Jeffrey Barr as Assistant Principal of Mulberry Middle School. Mr. Barr previously served as the Dean of Students and Athletic Director at Tennerock High School. He attended Florida State University, earning a bachelor's degree in political science and history. He went on to earn his master's degree in social science, education, and a specialist degree in education leadership and administration from Florida State University. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, Superintendent Bird. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the superintendent and the school board members for confirming my appointment, and your showing of support. I'd also like to show appreciation to Ms. Cangelos and the admin team at Mulberry for such a warm welcome this week. I'd also like to express my sincere gratitude to Mr. Looney and the administrative team at Tennerock High School. And lastly, I'd like to say thank you to my family, and especially my mom, who took time every night when she was busy to read to me when I was growing up. It made a difference, and I appreciate it. I'm a proud graduate of the Polk County school system, and I believe in the mission and the potential to prepare students in this county for success. We have high ideals to live up to, and I'm willing to meet those. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, and congratulations again.
Do you have anybody to announce? Is someone with you here today that you'd like to introduce?
I'm sure my mom is watching somewhere on simulcast, and she's here. That's my mom.
She has it all on video. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Melissa Bearden as the Assistant Principal of Garden Grove Elementary. Ms. Bearden previously served as the school-based math coach at Floral Avenue. She attended Florida Southern College, earning a bachelor's degree in psychology and criminology. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from Florida Southern College. Congratulations and welcome.
Good evening. First, I would like to give the glory to God for His continued mercy and grace. There have been several people on this journey with me, but I'd also like to thank Superintendent Bird, my regional superintendent, Michelle Townley, and the school board members for this opportunity to serve as the Assistant Principal at Garden Grove. I also would like to thank Shawna Burwell for the warm welcome that I've had so far this week. And I'd like to also thank some people that have been on this journey with me. Special thanks to my administration at Floral Avenue, Rebecca Ekman and Tammy Rule, for their continued mentorship for this journey that I've been on. A huge welcome and thanks for your mentorship and friendship to Maria Caroa and Chabree Timmons for leading me through this journey. And definitely a thank you to my family, who have had several sacrifices for me to be where I am today. So, and with me tonight, I have my parents, my husband, my mother-in-law, my children, and several friends.
A whole row.
So, thank you.
Congratulations to you, and we look forward to it. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Amy Bermudez as Assistant Principal of Oscar J. Pope Elementary School. Ms. Bermudez previously served as the Assistant Principal II at Crystal Lake Middle School. She attended Florida International University, earning a bachelor's degree in secondary English education. She went on to earn her master's degree in reading education from Nova Southeastern University, and her master's degree in educational leadership and policy studies from the University of South Florida. Congratulations and welcome.
I am so grateful for the opportunities that I have had in my leadership career in Polk County. I was very fortunate to have a principal at Crystal Lake who really took the time to teach me, and I am so grateful that Ms. Griffin is excited to have me as her new Assistant Principal and has welcomed me with open arms. I look forward to being able to serve the same community that I have served for the past six years. So, thank you very much, Superintendent Bird and the board, for allowing me this opportunity. And I have with me tonight my great principal, Ms. Griffin.
Congratulations. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Kristy Cotton as the Assistant Principal of Davenport School of the Arts. Ms. Cotton previously served as a testing coordinator for Davenport School of the Arts. She attended the University of South Florida, earning a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership. Congratulations and welcome.
I'd like to thank Superintendent Bird and the board for the opportunity to serve as an Assistant Principal at Davenport School of the Arts. I'm a Haynes City girl. I went to Alta Vista, Boone, and Haynes City High School, and I always hope to have the opportunity to serve students in the community where I'm from. There are a few people that I would like to thank this evening that have played a huge role in the journey to this moment. Sharon Knowles, Principal of Bethune Academy. She hired me for my first position as a fifth-grade teacher, and during the 10 years that I was there, she provided so many leadership opportunities for me as an aspiring leader. Brian Keer, Principal of Davenport School of the Arts, hired me to jump into the middle school world and also continued to provide me with leadership experiences. Regional Assistant Superintendent Tracy Collins, when I was going through aspiring leaders, we got the opportunity to do a table rotation, and she was one of those people. They were school and district leaders, and who knew that I would have the opportunity to serve at one of her schools one day, and I thank her so much for this chance. To my family, my mom, my dad, words can't describe what you mean to me, and I appreciate all the love and support that you've always provided for me. My new principal, Cindy Brayton, she's adhering to the fire code right now. But she was recently named Principal of Davenport School of the Arts, which was her, this is, ultimate goal, and I'm so thankful for her taking a chance on me at such an important time in her life. You're exactly the type of principal I've always wanted to work for, who's truly there for the students, and it shows in your dedication with actions and followed through every step. So, last, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. I'm looking forward to serving the students, staff, faculty, and surrounding communities of DSA, not only to support them in being successful students, successful in the arts, but successful in their lives. So, thank you. So, my family is here, and my principal, Cindy Brayton. So, thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Kanika Daly as Assistant Principal of Lincoln Avenue. Ms. Kanika Daly previously served as the Dean of Students at Ridge Community High. She attended Warner Southern University, earning a bachelor's degree in middle school science. She went on to earn her educational specials in curriculum and instruction, and a master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, Superintendent Bird. God certainly kept His promise with me. That's what I would like to say first. I first want to give honor and respect to God because I know it wouldn't be possible without Him. Thank you to all the board members, my new principal, Ms. Holland, Mr. Ely, the community, all of my friends and family for believing in me and supporting me to allow me to have this opportunity to serve the great students of Lincoln Avenue Academy. My visitors today is my mom and my dad, my son, Kamani, who is my number-one motivating factor, my best friend, Francesca Idelman, and Iris Allen. So, thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you and congratulations. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Jennifer Jackson as Assistant Principal of Westwood Middle. Ms. Jennifer Jackson previously served as the Assistant Principal II at McLaughlin Middle. She attended Bethune-Cookman University, earning a bachelor's degree in business administration. She went on to earn a master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, just like everyone in here has already said, I want to give honor to God because this is a long journey for me, and I am so appreciative, appreciate to, excuse me, Superintendent Bird and the board for allowing me this opportunity to serve as the Assistant Principal for Westwood Middle School. I have served under some great leadership throughout my journey here in Polk County schools. Some have passed on, some have retired, some are still serving, so I want to give honor to all of them as well. I want to give honor to Superintendent, Regional Director Patricia Barnes, because she has also seen me grow through this journey, and so I thank her for her support. I also want to give honor to Mr. Tarek Bennett. I don't see him in here. Oh, okay. He has taken me under his wings to show me the wood way. Thank you also, Mr. Campbell, who gives me a lot of laughter and joy every day. I look forward to serving the students and the staff at Westwood Middle School. So, I have with me my family, James Jackson, and Alfonso Jackson, and friends, if you're out there, I thank you as well. So, they've been my number-one cheerleaders through this whole journey. And I see my former family here from Lake Wales. They've known me ever since I was little. So, my sister, Terri Howard, and Twana Howard. Thank you again.
Thank you and congratulations again to you. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Rachel Jones as Assistant Principal of Dr. N.E. Roberts Elementary. Ms. Jones previously served as the English Language Arts Instructional Coach at Dr. N.E. Roberts Elementary. She attended the University of South Florida, earning a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from Southeastern University. Welcome and congratulations.
I had to write my note. I was very nervous. First and foremost, I wanted to thank God and give all Him all the glory because without Him, I am nothing. I would also like to take this time to thank the following people for not only believing in me, but for giving me the opportunity to serve as Assistant Principal at Dr. N.E. Roberts. You, Ms. Jacqueline Bird, my superintendent, Mrs. Henderson, my regional superintendent. I would also like to give a special thank you to Mr. Warren, my current principal at Dr. N.E.'s Roberts. I believe he's here. He is. Thank you. Thank you for all the leadership and guidance that you've given me over the past couple of years, and that you still want to go on that journey with me over the next future years. Thank you. I would also like to thank my former principal, Ms. Antoinette Kirby. Not only was she my mentor through my aspiring leaders, but she's also been a very good friend of mine. Last, but most importantly, is my family. I have my husband here with my three boys and my daughter, and there were many nights that I was up, and I did not cook dinner for them, so thank you for everything and supporting me through all these years. I love you.
Congratulations to you and welcome. I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Lance Lawson, Assistant Principal of Bartow High School. Mr. Lawson previously served as the Assistant Principal at Bartow High School. He attended Florida State University, earning a bachelor's degree in exceptional student education. He went on to earn a master's degree in exceptional student education from Florida State University. In addition, he earned a master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. In addition, he earned a master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. Welcome and congratulations to you.
Thank you Superintendent Bird. Thank you board for this opportunity. Thank you to my principal, Ms. Clemens. Oh, there she is. I appreciate this opportunity. I appreciate the growth opportunities while I'm there. I appreciate you for allowing me to pursue all of my crazy, I call them innovative, ideas. I really appreciate that. I appreciate my beautiful wife, Linda. My lovely daughter, hopefully she'll be nice to me today. And my in-laws for being here. I'm looking forward to being in Polk County. This is my second year. I'm looking forward to pushing Bartow High School to be a model school, not only in the school district, but in the state and in the country. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Jennifer Maderios as the Assistant Principal of McLaughlin Middle. Ms. Maderios previously served as the District Reading and Writing Coach in the Teaching and Learning Department. She attended UMass Dartmouth earning a bachelor's degree in accounting. She went on to earn her master's degree in curriculum and instruction from Leslie University and a certificate of advanced graduate study in educational leadership from the American International College. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to extend my sincerest gratitude to Superintendent Jaclyn Bird and the Polk County School Board for my appointment as Assistant Principal at McLaughlin. It is an honor to serve as a leader with this administrative team. I would also like to thank Patricia Barnes, Ann Everett, Sharon Chipman, and Deborah Wright-Hudson for their guidance and mentorship. I feel blessed to be among a community of individuals who will stop at nothing to do what is right for kids. I have an incredible support team from members and administration across the county. And I thank these leaders for their continued support and uplifting words of wisdom. I am ready to soar like a phoenix.
Where's your fam- stand up. Congratulations to you and welcome. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of John Monchelli as the Assistant Principal of Mulberry High School. Mr. Monchelli previously served as the Academic Dean and Assistant Principal Two at Mulberry High School. He attended Florida Southern College earning a bachelor's degree in music education. He went on to earn his master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent Jaclyn Bird. Thank you honorable board members for your trust and your support. I look forward to serving Mulberry High School, to continue to serve Mulberry High School in a different capacity. I want to thank all the people that have helped me grow in my leadership position. There are a lot to count, but starting with Ms. Porwood, who helped me get through my master's degree years ago when I worked in Lake Wales at McLaughlin Fine Arts Academy. I want to thank Patricia Barnes for hiring me to be an academic dean at Mulberry High School. Ms. Cynthia Kangello is for being an amazing principal who always supports the schools around her and always answering my calls and emails. And obviously, my principal, Michael Young, who is an amazing leader and I learn from him every single day. I also want to thank Lori Cunningham, who may not remember, but a long time ago, I worked in Lake Wales. And you taught me what, you know, the activism, how you through your actions can impact and impress young teachers. I was 21 when I started teaching in Lake Well, teaching music in Lake Wells. And I remember seeing her at my concerts, my orchestra students concert, and supporting our events. So, thank you for being engaged with your school. And same to all of you members for supporting your schools every single day. I want to thank my family. My wife could not be here tonight because she's working, well, she's taking care of our two babies. They're wild, but we love them. They're six and five now. And I want to thank my family who is in Venezuela. They may be watching me right now. I told them about it. So, thank you again for your support. And I look forward to continuing to serve Mulberry. Our students and families in Mulberry, go Panthers.
Congratulations and welcome. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Chandra Hall as Director of Equity and Diversity. Ms. Hall previously served as the Principal at James E. Stevens Elementary. She attended the University of South Florida earning a bachelor's degree in exceptional student education. She went on to earn a master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. I have some cheerleaders out there. Thank you Superintendent Bird, the board, for this opportunity and everyone else in their respective places. Mrs. Portius, who has been so welcoming in the HR department. I've had a great week, Ms. Wendy Winchester, we'll miss you. But I've had a great week so far. Facilities has also been really welcoming, so I thank them for that. I want to let you know that I am excited about this opportunity. I have had a number of experiences within our district. And each of them have given me the ability to look at situations through a different lens. I'm excited about this opportunity and continuing to work, working with our stakeholders and our community to promote equity and diversity in our district. Thank you. And I have with me today, I'm going to search and look. I have with me today my mother, Ms. Bessie Thompson, my amazing husband, and my sister, Mrs. Lisa Lincoln, Sean Hall. I have a host of family and friends. Did I miss anyone? I have a host of family and friends watching from home, mentors, and so many special people who have supported me. Oh, Rob Davis. Who have supported me throughout my career. Mrs. Townley, Ms. Townley has been a wonderful regional superintendent. I'm going to miss her. And the family of Stevens Elementary. I want to give a shout out to Stevens. I thought for sure I was going to retire from Stevens. I attended school there in '76 when that school first opened. And again, it has been a pleasure. The families are amazing, the staff, and I'm going to miss them dearly. But I am excited to serve in this role. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Last but not least, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Lisa Hester as Director of Accounting. Ms. Hester previously served as the Senior Manager of Auxiliary Accounting and Finance. She attended the University of West Florida earning an Associate's Degree in Business. She went on to earn a Bachelor's Degree in Accounting from the University of West Florida. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. So, I was going to say, I think I'm last, but you confirmed that I am last. I just want to say, for the past 20 years, I've actually worked at the school district in the finance and accounting business services division. I have served in four different positions there. And I feel very well prepared to become, have the challenge of being the accounting director. I've learned a wide range of knowledge throughout the positions that I've held. The last 15 years, I've been Senior Manager of Auxiliary Accounting, which is internal accounts and food service accounting. I've worked with several principals and several secretaries, helping them safeguard funds and follow policies and procedures. So, I am, I want to thank Mr. Perone and Mr. Pitts for giving me the opportunity and the confidence for me to be able to hold this position. I look forward and am very excited to work with the board in giving you financial, accurate financial data. And also to Ms. Bird. So, thank you very much. I have with me today my husband Garrett and my daughter Danielle and several coworkers in the back who are very hard workers and help me shine. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations. If you all would come up front for a group photo and Mr. Chair and the board. That concludes all of the new administrators for this evening.
We're in good hands. I know. I thought you were going to pass out there for a minute.
We have some keys.
Okay, I love you too now. Sarah, Sarah. Was that one of them? This means.
I lost control somewhere. I'm not sure where. The only thing that really concerns me. Okay, I think we're ready to get started again. I'm losing a board member. She's leaving. Who's the other one? Where's the other one? It's complete and utter loss of control. Visiting hours are over. Okay. So, again, congratulations to our new administrators. We appreciate all of them and we look forward to their future accomplishments. So, the next item on our agenda is approval of the revenue agreement. This is item R-54. This is approval of the revenue agreement with the Early Learning Coalition of Polk County for voluntary pre-kindergarten at the cost of $3,49,344. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the revenue agreement with the Early Learning Coalition of Polk County for voluntary pre-kindergarten at the cost of $3,49,344. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is item R-55. And this is approval of the revenue agreement with the Early Learning Coalition of Polk County in the amount of $1,425,600. And this is for Head Start VPK. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval of the revenue agreement with the Early Learning Coalition of Polk County in the amount of $1,425,600 for Head Start VPK. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R-56. And this is approval of increasing the contract with LSI by $200,000 for a total not to exceed $1 million for the 2019-2020 year. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for, second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval to increase the contract with LSI by $200,000 for a total not to exceed $1 million for the 2019-2020 year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item R-57. And this is approval of the agreement between the School Board of Polk County and the Learning Resource Center for $176,000. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval of the agreement between the School Board of Polk County and the Learning Resource Center in the amount of $176,000. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is motion to enter into an agreement with various law enforcement agencies for school resource officers/deputies for the 2019-2020 school year. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval to enter into an agreement with the various law enforcement agencies for school resource officers and deputies for the 2019-2020 school year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R-60. And this is approval of the execution of the agreement with Alcoma Properties LTD to approve the purchase of the mitigation bank credits with a not to exceed cost of $379,890. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Mr. Townsend.
Yeah, I just, this is just interesting. I mean, it's, the sand skanks are important and dangerous species. I don't say that with any irony at all. And I don't know, it's, the new high, the new high school is disrupting their potential habitat a bit. So, we're going to replace some of that habitat through a land, a land bank. I just think that's sort of an interesting modern reality, so. That's it.
We had to do it at Citrus Ridge.
Yeah, we had to do it at Citrus Ridge also.
And it seemed like it was more expensive and more time consuming.
There's fewer skanks.
Any further comments? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the execution of the agreement with Alcoma Properties LTD to approve the purchase of mitigation bank credits with a not to exceed cost of $379,890. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is R-61. And this is approval of amendment number two to RADA constructions contract for a guaranteed maximum price of $3,82,479 for their proposal dated June 11, 2019 for site work. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval of amendment number two to RADA constructions contract for a guaranteed maximum price of $3,82,479 per their proposal dated June 11, 2019 for site work. Do we have a comment?
Yeah, this is the, this is the one with the single site entry and they're doing all that, all the, or do I have that confused?
Could we ask Ms. Sacher to come down? Madam Superintendent, would that be okay?
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought with RADA was a different thing. Okay.
Mr. Townsend, it is for the Davenport and it is for site work. We're bringing to you in ports. First, you did the demolition, now we're doing the site work.
Yeah, I just got confused on the order and the thing.
Thank you, Ms. Sacher. So, any further comments? All right, so at this time, I will conduct a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R-62. And this is approval of increasing the new school. It's labeled 19A.A.A. The project to, approve the project to reflect an estimated construction cost in the amount of roughly $84 million. The exact amount will be approved at a later board meeting. This is in the northeast part of the county, of course. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Townsend, did you have some comments or was that?
No, I had a tragedy. I'm sorry. I managed to spill the fresh coffee that I just got all over the place. Sorry. So, my comment was ah.
Well, your light was on, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Bad, bad board member. Sorry.
No worries. So, are there, given there's no discussion, the motion on the floor is approval to increase the new high school in the northeast part of the county. It's labeled 19A.A.A. to reflect an estimated construction cost of $84 million. All in favor, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R-63, and this is approval, to approve the administrative and instructional personnel recommendations. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the administrative and instructional personnel recommendations. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R-64, and this is approval of the non-instructional personnel actions. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval of the non-instructional personnel actions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R-65, and this is approval of the temporary duty assignments. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval of the temporary duty assignments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R-66, and this is approval of the 2019-2020 mental health plan. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval of the 2019-2020 mental health plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R-67, and this is approval of the contract with educational-based services in an amount not to exceed $150,000. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the contract with educational-based services in the amount, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll go to our code of student conduct. We'll have a public hearing on that in just a moment, but first, I'd like to ask Mr. Butler to come down and give us a little bit of a review of what this is.
How are you all tonight?
Good.
Good. Basically, I'm here to present the changes to the code of student conduct for this upcoming school year. As you know, by board policy, the code must be reviewed annually and then accepted by the board. This year, there was only one change, and that change is located on page 31 of the final version of the code of student conduct. There was language added under section 4.03, disruptive behavior and minor infractions, to include the public display of affection, and it reads as follows. Engaging in unsuitable intimate sexually suggestive behavior, inappropriate public display of affection with another individual on the bus, campus, or otherwise school-sponsored activities has been added.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Does anyone on the board who has any questions? Okay, so at this time, I would invite members of the public to come forward if you have any questions or comments related to the updated student code of conduct. Anyone like to speak to that? Yes, ma'am. If you would, please give us your name for our records.
Margie Patterson, school bus driver. Thank you!
Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2019-2020 code of student conduct. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Ms. Reynolds?
I just think it's important to note that our middle school regional superintendent was also shaking her head and smiling very broadly when this was announced, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Any further comments? So the motion on the floor is approval of the 2019-2020 code of student conduct. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Butler. The next item on the agenda is item R-69, and this is approval of our school board policy updates. And before I invite public comment, I'd like Ms. Dodge to come forward and review those for us, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have two sets of policy updates this evening. The first are staff recommended updates, and there's only one update on there, and that's to our volunteer policy, where we've updated that the board will set the cost for volunteers annually or at their discretion, and then we have modified the qualifications to align with our employee qualifications. Do we do them separately or together? Okay. Okay, the second set of policies is more extensive, and those were the Neola recommended policies. The first two, three are board bylaws. The first one just upstays definitions throughout our policies. We say when it's a capital S, that means the superintendent or her designee, and whenever it's a small s, that means the superintendent, and the same for principals. That's how we designate who does what in our policies, and that's clarified in bylaw 100, 124, our changes to ethical contact for board members, which were modified in HB 1279. And then there's a new board bylaw, which, because of the new statute that talks about board travel, if the district pays for it, board travel over $500 must be approved by the board or any travel out of state. The rest, well, not the rest, but a significant portion of the policies are safety and security policies as a result of the bill SB 7030, which were the recommendations of the MSD Commission. And so that would be in policy 5500, 5112, 8330, 8405, 8407, and 8420. Those are all updates that were required as a result of that bill. And then the school improvement, 2120, is updated to add additional criteria to our early warning systems for our schools. And 6325 was updated to reflect a change in federal regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dodge. Do we have any questions from the board members? Okay, so at this time, I would invite members of the public to come forward and offer comments or ask questions related to our school board policy updates. Would anyone from the general public like to address our school board policy updates? Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the school board policy updates as indicated by Ms. Dodge and indicated on our notice to the public. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the school board policy updates as indicated. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item, we have our tentative budget that we need to go through. We have a number of motions to address here, but before we open this up to comments from the general public, I'd ask Mr. Proon to come forward and kind of walk us through this.
Good evening. So, we are here for the first public hearing on the tentative budget and millage rates. As you know, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, July 23rd, we asked the board for approval on the advertisement, which ran on Saturday, July 27th, so we met that requirement. We are now to have a public hearing within five days of that, and tonight is that night. I'm not going to read the millage rates, Mr. Wilson, because you're going to read each one of those individually, so I won't. But I do want to mention that the rates reflect an increase in the total rolled-back rate of 1.72%. They are, there is a decrease in the overall millage rate of .165 mils, and I just want to mention that the total budget, all funds included, is, that you will be voting tonight,
Okay.
And any questions before the public hearing? I'll answer, or Mr. Pez, but if not?
Thank you, Mr. Proon. So before I open the, invite the public to come forward, are there any questions or comments from the board? All right, Mr. Townsend.
I just want to take a moment to reiterate both the structure of the budget and what we discussed last week. You know, the way school funding works, there is a required local effort in property tax that the state sets. Twenty years ago, that was 5.9 mils. Today, it's 3.8 mils. That's 2.1 mils. What that translates into this year, just this year, is $86 million not being spent on teacher salaries, not being spent on para salaries, not being spent on bus driver salaries. You know, many of the issues we have wouldn't even be issues if they just left that rate alone. I think the, it's a massive state-level disinvestment in incredibly important human infrastructure, and, you know, it's a hole that's going to have to be filled one day. And just want to make that point. Additionally, a ton of this budget, you know, $1.7 billion is a big number, but a lot of that is, the exact amounts off the top of my head, I don't have, but there's, much of that is designated how we can spend it. We're not allowed to spend that on teacher salaries or free operations. There's a lot of, we have what amounts to a state school system, and they generally tell us where to spend that money. So I think those are just facts that the public needs to know. We had a good discussion about this at the work session. Would encourage everybody to go watch it, and this is going to continue to be an ongoing thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Any other questions from the board members or comments? So at this time, I would invite anyone from the public to come forward and offer comments or ask questions related to the budget. And I did have a card from Marjorie Patterson related to the budget and the millage rate.
I'm Margie Patterson, Vice President of the Bus Drivers for ASME and also Bus Driver. And we were really concerned with the millage rate, because we know that that's what bases our salaries. And we want to thank you for having that discussion today, because that was our big concern. We want to get it out to the public that we got to get this millage rate up. We need the money to support our schools, and that's why we keep losing our support services, because we cannot live on what we're given. I've been here so long, I'm older than dirt, but the new people come in and they say, "Oh, I can't live on this," and they leave. So that was our concern, was with the millage rate, and we are so glad that you had that discussion today, so that we could see if we could get the legislators to give us that rate. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other, anyone else who would like to speak to the budget or millage rates? Yes.
Larry Milhorn, President, asked me. I just want to follow up with Margie said. We're willing to work with the board, superintendent, anybody that wants to come out, the public, and try to get our legislatures to understand the funding in our school district. And that millage rate can help and fix a lot of holes we have in this system right now. And anytime you need me to come out and help with that, just let me know. My people will come out in force if we have to, and I know PEA will too. Margie said we losing good people, and we are. It's not all your fault. The finances in this district are so tight. We have looked at the budget, and we see where you're coming from. And the only way to fix it is with the millage rate, and only the state can fix that millage rate right now for us. And that needs to go back up, and we need to get that fixed. That's all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milhorn. Anyone else like to speak to the budget or the millage?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Lisa Burke, and I wanted to speak to you about the budget process and the fact that every dime of money that you spend, every decision that you make, directly impacts your employees, our families, and of those families, those are our kids that we're dealing with in the schools. So as we move forward with the Bleak comic bargaining, bargain in health insurance concerns that have your employees scrambling to offer their healthcare, you must look at positions and programs that we can't afford, what other districts have if we cannot support what we have, continue to support our loyal workers that continue to work for our students. Other districts have larger tax bases and have passed millages to support employees' wages in many cases. This is restricted in its, our board has restricted its ability to pass a mill, continues to find money for everything it wants to fund. My question is, when will that be your concern to your loyal employees who need, who need you to dedicate their money appropriately and help us fight Tallahassee to get us more money? And I do thank you for considering the millage rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward, please?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Yocum. I represent the, I'm the President of the Polk Education Association, and I just wanted, I was in the work session, I heard some of the talks about our local millage efforts. I know the restriction in the resolution. I really urge you guys to take a look at your options with that. I think that you'll find more people than not, our people, ASME, will rally behind you if you decide to look at your options to go for this mill. We know the state's not going to fund us anytime soon. I'm kind of losing hope in them, but, so we need to kind of take matters into our own hands, and I think that we saw over the state in our primary elections, in our November elections, that 24 counties had decided to take matters into their own hands and tax themselves. You know, in red counties like ours, that are conservative, anti-tax for the most part, decided to take matters into their own hands, tax themselves, because they feel that public education is worth it. I think that, you know, we have a good start with the half-cent sales tax, but we have to put ourselves out there and go out for that mill. And I think that it might be more of a political thing than maybe a legal thing. You guys can look at your options with that, but I think you'll find that you will have the community rally behind you if you decide to move forward with this.
Thank you, Ms. Yocum. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the budget or the millage?
Good evening, Superintendent Byrd and board members. Thank you so much for having me here. It's kind of a first-timer for me. I wanted to see Mr. Manicelli and Lisa Hester, you know, and all that that happened, and it's great. But I just want to speak to you as an employee. My name's Alicia Dorado. I'm the Foods Receiving Order Clerk for the Polk County Public Schools Central Warehouse and Distribution Center. I handle most every food item that you can think of, from cans to frozen foods. It's obvious that we have a tremendous county that love our students. I've been serving the students of Polk County for 15 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. One of the things that I've asked myself, and the question that many of the lunchroom staff that I run into are asking, because they are on the lower-paid tier rate of the county, the millage rate is very important, and if you're watching, some of you guys, legislators up there in Tallahassee, there are students, there are families that are being impacted. The NGA, some of our employees are recipients of what we're going to be delivering tomorrow. We have a tractor-trailer full of all the NGA stuff. Some of our employees are the recipients of those things. They're not making ends meet. So I understand that the millage rate needs to be worked on, because we're growing astronomically, not only on the east side of the county, but the west side of the county. Mulberry, Bridgeport Lake, 753 homes will be built, then Landfall, or Landstar Realty is going to be building off Nichols Road. There'll be 7,000 homes when that's done. We're just busting at the seams. So my question is today, and it's for the board, and I'm so sorry that I had it pulled up, but I'm going to pull it up so I don't get confused. Working at the warehouse, we always bid on everything. There's always local bids for everything, from pencils to paper. So one of my questions is, with less frequency on raises in cost, and the cost of healthcare going up, it would make sense, and I don't know how much you're tied into your current contract with Florida Blue, but to send out bids to other insurance providers, such as maybe Aetna or Humana, and see what others would compete for your business. Obviously, you can put in the clause there that they would continue to manage it, just like Blue Cross does, or Florida Blue now. Regardless that we are self-insured, companies would still manage it as Florida Blue and compete. And so maybe we could save money in that aspect, because I do know that for some, you know, if insurance rates go up, you know, I know we went up $10 to $50 copay, but when somebody's not making a lot and they go to the doctor twice, you know, that's 100 bucks out of their check. So I'm just, I'm just an employee, just like everybody else. I'm proud to work for Polk County Public Schools. I've got tons of community service hours, because I love this county and I love Mulberry, Go Panthers, Manicelli, but, you know, it's just something that I was just asking the question while I was here tonight. Thank you so much for your time. May y'all have a great... May y'all have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorado. Do we have anyone else who would like to address the board as relates to the budget and the millage rate? Mr. Dorado, I think? Could you get his attention? What's your name again, sir?
My name is Alicia Dorado.
Dorado. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson and board. My name is Jimmy Nelson. I'm from Lake Wales. And relative to the budget, I would just like to mention that a significant portion of your budget, some portion of the budget certainly, will be dedicated for determining external operators for schools and turnaround. Obviously, we have one of those in Lake Wales. And again, relative to the budget, there will be some portion of those dollars allocated to one of our schools in Lake Wales. And I just want to mention that it may be possible for the board to redirect dollars that would otherwise go to Lake Wales to other needs. And obviously, they're abundant. You've had several spoken about this evening, people wishing and hoping that additional funding could be found. Possible that we have a system in Lake Wales that could serve as the external operator, could be contracted with as the external operator for the school in Lake Wales. And if that's possible, then it's also possible, again, that significant savings could be realized from a budgetary standpoint, savings as far as Lake Wales is concerned that could then be redirected to other demands that you have in other areas of your budget. So just wanted to mention that, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Before we go to board members' questions, comments, I'd like to see if we have anyone else from the general public who would like to speak to the budget or millage? Anyone else from the general public? Okay. Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, I was just gonna, I was just gonna take a minute to address Mr. Nelson's comments. If we could meet for a few minutes after the board meeting, if you're here, I might be able to help you with that. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Miller?
I, too, would like to address Mr. Nelson. And we've had the discussion during the work session, and several board members have vocalized that upon state approval, that's where we would go to look to have Lake Wales take care of their community. And we're just not hearing that that's a possibility. And so I think an extended discussion on that needs to be held, and I appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Nelson, are you planning to speak again later, or are we getting this out now? Okay. I think what would be helpful is what I think Mrs. Byrd said today was that the state had informed them that Lake Wales cannot act as the, just because Lake Wales gives me a headache all the time. I would love to see some letter from Tallahassee, somebody's name signed to it, saying Lake Wales is or is not available to be an external operator signed by, if that's Adam Emerson or whomever that is. I mean, if it's an easy enough contact, just, then at least we all agree with each other on that. All right, well, point one, I would, I would like to see something in writing from the state DOE that says yes or no, based on what's our consensus is. Two, if we're gonna talk about the idea of a wider issue, of sort of a wider solution where the boards get together to discuss this, maybe we should just see if there are four board members here who want to do that meeting. And if there are, then we can move to schedule it and set an agenda. I mean, I, I mean, do we want to wait and do that later in the meeting, or do you want to talk about it now? What do you want to do?
Well, I'd rather, I mean, the topic of this discussion was the budget and the millage rate. So I would prefer to hold that till later.
Okay.
All right. So is there any further discussion about the budget or the millage rate before we start voting on these items? All right? So the first item on this part of the agenda is approval of the required local effort, RLE, in the amount of 3.83 mills. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval of the required local effort in the amount of 3.83 mills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of the discretionary operating millage in the amount of 7.8 mills. Excuse me, .78 mills. Excuse me. .748 mills. Did I get it right that time?
You did.
Thank you. .748 mills. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? So this item is approval of the discretionary operating millage in the amount of 7.748 mills. I've got a lot of stuff on my paper going here, and I'm having trouble picking out the relevant stuff. So this is in the amount of .748 mills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of the local capital improvement in the amount of 1.5 mills. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Motion on the floor is approval of the local, is approval of local capital improvement in the amount of 1.5 mills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of Resolution 2019-2020-01, formally adopting the millage rates for 2019-2020. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Okay, let me put my light on.
Okay. Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, just as a note, there's a typo on here. Mr. Perone, it should be, I believe, 1.7 billion. And there's three sets of commas. Third paragraph, whereas, the very last line, 1.769, comma, 942, and then it says, comma, 130. Think that should be a period, since we're voting on it.
Ms. Fortney?
I thought you said it was 129, not 130, when you were giving the numbers. No, just now, like...
No, yeah, they're saying, when I read, I read the total from the ad.
Not from the papers. Okay.
Which is 129. And on the resolution, it's 130.
It's 130, yes, sir. Is correct.
Are we gonna be okay with the ad? Okay. The Department of Revenue approved our ad, so if that number is wrong, we have in writing that they approved the ad. So we shouldn't have to, especially for that amount. I don't think they're gonna make us rerun the ad.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Fortney, did you?
No, that was it.
Okay. Mr. Townsend?
Where was the typo, Lori? I'm sorry.
Should've been 129, not 130, after the last comma.
Oh, so it's, it's just $129 versus $130? Okay.
Just trying to be sure.
No, no, I got you. We're sensitive to resolutions these days.
So we're ready to move forward?
We are.
Mr. Bridges, are we ready to move forward?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
If there's a punctuation error, we can correct that as a Scrivener's error.
All right, thank you. So the motion on the floor is approval of Resolution 2019-2020-01, formally adopting the millage rates for 2019-2020. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of Resolution 2019-2020-02, formally adopting the 2019-2020 tentative budget. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of Resolution 2019-2020-02, formally adopting the 2019-2020 tentative budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last item is a motion to submit to the property appraiser Form DR-420-S Certificate of Taxable Value, which reflects the previously approved tentative millage rates and sets the final budget hearing for Tuesday, September 3, 2019, no earlier than 5:01 PM in the school board auditorium located at 1915 South Floral Avenue, Bartow, Florida. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? So I'm not gonna read that again. The motion on the floor was the motion I just read into the records. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So with that, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. The next work session will be held on Tuesday, August 20 of 2019, at 12:30 PM in the superintendent's conference room, followed by 5:00 PM school board meeting held in auditorium located at 1915 South Floral Avenue. I would like to welcome back all of our teachers on Monday, August 5, as they return back to work for the 1920 school year, followed by the following Monday, welcoming back all of our students, August 12, returning. I would like to also caution our community that we will have our students at bus stops walking to school, so please slow down as they're coming to school on August 12. Last but not least, Joanne Clinton will be finally retiring from the Polk County School System the 1st of August, so we want to congratulate her for all her years of service. You see Wendy Winchester sitting next to her this evening as she will be replacing Ms. Clinton. So Ms. Clinton, as you go off into the land of retirement, thank you for all your years of service here at Polk County Public School System. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things. First, I need to request authority to advertise a public hearing to be held on September 3 of 2019 during the regularly scheduled board meeting to adopt provisions to the 2019-2020 Student Progression Plan.
Okay, so do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request to advertise a public hearing on September 3, 2019, to advertise the 2019-2020 Student Progression Plan. Any discussion? Again, I'm not gonna read that again. It's already been read into the record. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the, and the second thing I would like to mention is that, as you all may have noticed, Beverly Hartley is not sitting at the front desk in my office anymore. Mrs. Hartley has decamped for facilities where she now works with Mrs. Usher and Mr. Alderman. She was in that office for 18 years, and she made the trains run on time. I would go so far as to say that if you look in the dictionary next to the definition of lady, you will find her picture. She's one of the finest human beings that I've ever had the pleasure to know, and I am bereft. But I will tell you, we are, we are overjoyed that, beginning on Thursday, Karen Bone will join us. You all may remember Karen. She worked in the district offices several years ago. But for the, for the last many years, she has served as the Principal Secretary at Altus. So Chuck Pemberton's loss is my gain. She will be the smiling face at the front desk in my office when you come in henceforth. And when you see her, I hope you will, you will say welcome to her and thank God. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Matthews, did you have a report? Thank you, Ms. Matthews. So this time, we'll start with our board member reports, and we'll start with Ms. Miller.
Oh, we changed it up. Is that because I complained last time, Chairman? No, I think the superintendent said the welcome back that I was intending for our students. I do want to remind parents, especially parents who receive support services. There are a lot of opportunities now for school choice. I'm a family that takes advantage of one of those opportunities. I'm also a family that used the McKay Scholarship to go to a private school that didn't fulfill their promises. So I want parents to be reminded that, yes, there are lots of school choices now available to parents and families, especially of low socioeconomic and families with, students with disabilities. But it is your responsibility to do diligence. The same laws that protect you, IDA that protects you in the public system, do not protect you, and they do not apply to the private settings. And so if you hear of a school promising great things, please do your research before you commit those dollars to that school because many of those students are returning to our public schools without receiving the proper services they should have had. And I think it's no ill intent. You know, sometimes people get into the business of schools without understanding what it really takes to make them successful. And I'm not gonna steal Ms. Fortney's line, but more often than not, especially when you're talking about the community that I represent, the services afforded to you in a public setting, be that public charter or public schools, are gonna be more than you will find in a for-profit setting in a smaller venue. So please do your due diligence. I get a lot of phone calls from parents very upset. Children are a year behind in academics, and they're wanting to come back, and they want to know where their placement will be. And unfortunately, it happens, and you need to be aware of that. So please advocate just as strongly in your community as you do in our schools for your children. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Reynolds?
So excited not to repeat everything Lori said tonight, because it seems like I always get to repeat all the shows she's been to. So I want to say thank you to Ms. Clinton because when I first came on the board, she was the school board administrative assistant. And the first six months to a year, she kept me 100% online and reminded me of all of the things that I would forget about and truly helped me get inundated to the system. So thank you for all of your support and help throughout my first year. Secondly, thank you to all of our teachers who have, I know their official contract date is the 5th, but my sister is back in Polk County teaching, and I was helping her in her classroom this week. And I think every teacher at Wendell Watson Elementary School was there setting up their classrooms. And this has been, you know, a week and a half that they've been back setting up classrooms. So even though their contracts haven't started yet, they go well beyond the call of duty and are already working hard to make sure that our schools are ready and waiting for students to arrive and make them feel like home. And then lastly, I want to give a big shout out to Polk Vision because they have been instrumental the past few months in helping PEP to reorganize a little bit and make sure that we're being a conduit for all of our services in the community and making sure that we can best impact our students in the Winter Haven area. So a huge thank you to Kim Long to not only lending her time, but also her staff's time specifically to support our Winter Haven schools. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you so much. Just a couple things. Want to wish Ms. Joanne Clinton much happiness in her retirement. There's always a season of life, and I wish you the best in your next season. And I want to welcome Ms. Winchester. I look forward to working with you, and thank you for taking on the job of taking care of our superintendent and make sure she's doing well each and every day. So it's gonna be a very important job for you to take over. I want to give a shout out to Rob Davis for the first time opening up a call center for school buses. When I read that, I was just absolutely elated. I especially get a lot of calls and texts. Yeah, amen. I usually get a lot of calls and texts, and Rob and I have become first-of-the-year buddies with all the stuff that goes on in northeast Polk County. So when I read this, I thought, oh, Rob, I love you, and I appreciate what you've done. For those of you that may be listening, if you need to contact that call center, it has been, it'll be opened up coming up July 29, did I read? Yes. So it's, it's live as of yesterday. The phone number is 863-534-7300. Once again, 863-534-7300. And it's open 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So if you do have busing questions about your children and what bus and routes and all of that, please do give them a call because I really think that'll help as we get started with school on August 12. And I, too, want to just welcome back staff. What an awesome summer. Hopefully, everybody's got some rest, and we're ready to continue our rigor and relevance in this wonderful school district that I'm so proud to be a part of. So thank you to our staff and our students, and be safe out there. And as someone has already said, everybody, please slow down because the kids will be on the streets here in about a week. So, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Fortney?
Well, a shout out to Fort Meade, Dixie Youth, O-Zone. They won the World Series. And the reason I bring this up is because their coaches are our teachers. So head coach is Jamal Cornelius. He also is the head football coach down... He also is the head football coach down there and a Gator. And he's a dean. Assistant coach Scott Harrell, he teaches at Fort Meade High. J.C. Barnett, I have no idea what he does, but I'm sure he's a teacher in education somewhere. And the students are from Lena, Anna Woodbury and Barto Elementary. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. That happened today. Thank you, Susan, for finding that out for me. You know, speaking of invaluable secretary, I've never had a secretary, so, ever. As a teacher, we don't have those things. So I'm sure that y'all are just wonderful, and Ms. Clanton, enjoy retirement. And welcome aboard, Ms. Winchester. I did get a lot of emails from you. I remember that. But, from Ms. Tedra. You know, you're talking about the room, teachers already in their classrooms, you know, we have such a dedicated workforce. I mean, not just the teachers are in there, we've got paras in there. They want to do well, and we want to support them. I really, there are some availability issues that I did not get a chance to bring up in the work session, but I know that the majority of teachers want to be in there. That pre-planning week, I mean, I am fresh out of the classroom. You're not really listening to what y'all are saying. I'm just telling you. You're worried about getting a poster up, your room looking nice for parents and kids, that kind of thing. So if we could be mindful of time and not make it an expectation that we stay till 9:30 that night doing it, that's kind of the sensation. So I did Fort Meade, went to the UA marker ceremony. This is how I know Superintendent Byrd works all the time, because I see her everywhere. That was awesome. That was an awesome event. Just so nice to see folks. We all were there last night, wasn't it last night? The summer school graduation. Forty-one kids made it, you know, never gave up. It was just awesome. Forty-one kids, and Mr. Hill gave a grand motivational speech he always does. I don't know if y'all saw the Lake Wells gang here earlier. I shouldn't have called it that. That's my ACCO group that Superintendent Byrd has approved for us to try to roll out through some of our schools on the 60th quarter. It is a really, really, really important community involvement that I'm going to try to get off the ground. If you did not watch the, if you can, watch the work session. There was a lot of discussion today. Good discussion. I urge you to do that, and I welcome back my friends and our employees back to school. I know you're going to have a wonderful year, and reach out as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Mr. Townsend?
Yes, I also want to join everybody in wishing Joanne good luck. It's not the easiest thing in the world to run interference on seven strong-willed people, and Superintendent, I appreciate your patience over the years, and good luck to you. Couple of things. One, it really is pretty staggering. I didn't even know about the NGA thing, but the sheer number of groups and people who are doing things to support kids going back to school is really, it's impossible to keep up with all of them. I actually asked people to send me links to what they were doing and put a whole bunch of them up on my Facebook page. There's probably 20 or more at least. I think it's a very nice testament to how seriously people take the, you know, the essence of a public education and human development gives us a lot to build on. This is something I meant to raise at the work session, ran out of time and didn't get to, but I went to a visit at a school to kind of experience some of what custodians manage and go through. And one of the things that was, that stuck out at this particular school, and I think there are some others, where we have portables, the path for them to bring their stuff into the portable generally doesn't exist. It's, so you're dragging these big, heavy bottles of equipment and carts and things through dirt and grass, and, you know, I don't know how many schools we have that situation going on, but I wonder, someone suggested golf carts or something to that effect. If that is a thing that we could give a little thought to, how to better transport the carts full of stuff, particularly to the portables where there aren't really sidewalks or anything, I think that would be a practical help. So for whomever's listening to that, I see Angela nodding. Thank you. And I guess, do we want to talk about the Lake Wells thing now? Do you want to wait till?
I think we'll wait, because they have some things they'd like to say.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Miller, you had some additional comments you wanted to make?
I just wanted to thank all the local Kiwanis Clubs from the county showed up at Kingsford Elementary on Saturday for beautification day to help get their campus looking nice with mulch and paint and things. So I want to say thank you to that group, those groups. And for anybody looking for a project this Saturday, Philip O'Brien is having another one of those kind of days. So starting at 7:30 in the morning, if you'd like to join them in help, in helping clear their campus and planting some plants and making it look nice, they would appreciate your help. So Philip O'Brien this Saturday, starting at 7:30, there's an opportunity for community involvement.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot. I was there Saturday at Kingsford, and...
Of course you were, Ms. Fortney.
Well, yeah, but anyways, Tico is doing their whole front garden now. Dani Higgins, if you do not know that woman, she is amazing, and I finally, she was a friend, but not a real friend, you know, one of those kind of friends? And now I see what she does. So I've spent the last two days trying to, I've already gotten everybody's socks up here to take to her. You know, she does amazing things. We are packing 167 bookbags for Kingsford tomorrow, and Hearth is helping us. Thank you, more socks, I appreciate it. And, you know, just, yes, Tedra? United Methodist of Mulberry. Mulberry United Methodist Church. That would be six-ish. Is that what, did I do it right, sir? Soon as I heard you were a Mulberry guy, I wrote your name down. See? That, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. It's awesome. There are so many kids in need. I sent Ms. Usher pictures of where these kids live, and just to kind of pull at her heartstrings to get some stuff done for them at that school. So today, when I heard we were maybe doing another one, I was like thrilled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Mr. Bridges, did you have some additional comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I apologize, our ace legislative affairs director has indicated to me that she would very much like for you to have a public hearing on the 3rd, also for the policies that she delivered, the revisions she delivered at today's work session. So without objection, I will include that in our advertisement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bridges, so we don't need another motion?
No, sir, I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Dodge, for reminding us. So with this time, in just a moment, I'm going to invite speakers, folks who'd like to come forward and speak on anything related to the school district. We do have some, just some housekeeping things. Again, I would remind folks that we welcome your positive comments. We welcome your criticisms. I respectfully request that you focus on the issues and not on individuals. Please do not disparage the board members, the superintendent, or her staff. If it's necessary to disparage someone, please direct your comments at me. In addition to that, specifically, please bear in mind that these comments become, are part of the public record. So if you're speaking about a child or student, if it's not your own, please, again, do not identify that individual. Remain focused on the issues and not on the individuals involved. And lastly, we will start with the folks who turned in cards, and we'll work our way back to the folks who did not. So at this time, I would invite Danny Gill to come forward.
Good evening, Superintendent Byrd, Chairman Wilson, and distinguished board members. My name is Danny Gill. I'm the current chair of the Lake Wells Charter School Board of Trustees, and I'm here representing them this evening. We are aware that the Polk County School Board is needing to select a new external operator for the turnaround option of McLaughlin Middle School in Lake Wells. Pursuant to Florida Statute 1008.334B3, Option 3 states, "Contract with an outside entity that has demonstrated record of effectiveness to operate the school. An outside entity may include a district-managed charter school in which all instructional personnel are not employees of the school district but are employees of an independent governing board composed of members who did not participate in the review or approval of the charter." We are currently working with the DOE to get on the EO list. We are proposing that the Polk County School Board consider entering into a contract with Lake Wells Charter Schools as the outside entity for McLaughlin Middle School. Lake Wells Charter Schools has a proven record of turning around high-poverty schools serving low-performing students with similar demographics. Our record for turnarounds involves the very same high-poverty students with identical demographics, because the majority of the McLaughlin students come from the four charter elementary schools in Lake Wells. In the past, two of our four elementary schools were D schools, but today, those very same schools are now B and C, with the C nearly being a B. Moreover, Lake Wells High School is the designation for McLaughlin students who emerged from a D middle school. We provide remediation in their freshman and sophomore years to help them succeed and graduate at a 90% rate from a high school with a B designation. If given the opportunity, we believe Lake Wells Charter Schools would be able to serve the needs of McLaughlin for much less money than would be required by the typical out-of-county, out-of-state, external operator with no connection or knowledge of the community. We, on the other hand, have a vested interest in our local community and all of the Lake Wells students. This external operator partnership should create significant resource savings to the district, making those funds available to address other pressing student needs, such as mentoring, tutoring, mental health, and school safety. We believe such an arrangement would be in the best interest of our community and its students. We would like to offer our services and hope you will give this proposal favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. I'm sorry. Madam Superintendent, did you have, did you have some comments that you'd like to make? No? Okay. All right, so at this time, then, I would invite, and I just have one question, then, to be clear, the DOE indicated to us that your, the school system indicated to them that you wanted to take the school over and not act as an external operator.
Incorrect information.
Okay, so, I mean...
That was never the operative.
It was never the operative, but that's what went to the DOE and came back to us.
No.
Well, it actually is, but what you're telling us is that that went to the DOE incorrectly. Is that correct?
I talked to Melissa Ramsey this afternoon. She's the executive director...
Can you come up here for the record, please? Mr. Gibson, thank you.
My name's Robin Gibson, small-town lawyer. On the issue that the chairman was talking about, I didn't know until today that they had the wrong information. And email came out, it was 4 o'clock yesterday afternoon, I was in a seminar. When I saw it today, I immediately wrote a corrective letter, and I, and they called immediately. The lady was Melissa Ramsey, executive director, Bureau of School Improvement, Florida Department of Education. She's in charge of this area. She was very nice. I explained the whole thing to her. They correctly understand it now. And by the way, in the letter to the superintendent, the correct provision in the rule was cited. And in a letter to the Commissioner of Education, the correct term was utilized, I don't know where, there was a phone call that they got all mixed up on. What we are seeking to do here is to just simply step in the shoes of an external operator from out of the state or out of the county and enter into a contract. And if that contract, we have a benefactor who pulled out after the session at Vanguard, if that contract is satisfactory to everybody, the hope is the benefactor would come back in. If that's true, we could perform this service over a three-year period for zero. Now, it's going to cost you...
Mr. Gibson, I...
All right.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we do have a time limit.
I don't want to overstep. So anyway, the short of it is that it's corrected as far as DOE is concerned. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Byrd?
I just forwarded the board the email from the DOE. I have not gotten any new communication from the Department of Education regarding that, so I just forwarded you what was sent to me from Melissa Ramsey for the record.
And she, by the way, told me that she would be calling Superintendent Byrd.
I haven't heard anything from her as of now, email nor call.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. All right, so our next speaker is Bernie Hayes. Bernie Hayes? Mr. Hayes? Lisa Burke?
I already did.
Okay. I think Mr. Dorado already spoke to us. Kevin Madsen? So we have, I think it looks like Jagger Henry? Mr. Henry?
Hello. I'm a 17-year-old cybersecurity researcher. I feel it's important to preface that it's not my intention to expose anything or throw any programmers under the bus. The opposite, actually. I really think it's important to start a dialogue about cybersecurity, especially within the context of the county. Before you get the wrong idea, I'm not just some teenager that watches too many anonymous documentaries. It is my job, literally. But on the same coin, I'm not an expert. You'll never hear me claim to be one. Even with that being said, I was personally able to identify multiple critical vulnerabilities in PCPS applications. I've reported these issues to your engineers and made sure that these bugs were fixed prior to this meeting. Among the vulnerabilities I've helped resolve, one endpoint potentially allowed for the ability to harvest student PII, such as social security numbers, addresses, and emails. And I think it's important to really stress how easy it was to find these vulnerabilities. I can't go into very specifics for hopefully obvious reasons, but they're high-impact but trivial to replicate vulnerabilities. As somebody who actively works in cybersecurity, I completely understand that any system big enough will have problems. Take, for example, PayPal, they paid over a million dollars last year to independent security researchers who found vulnerabilities in their systems. However, for the bugs I found, normally I get excited when I find bugs, because it means I'm doing something right. I didn't really get excited over these ones. They're just, they're really, really simple, and they're just scary. They're not fun to find. Even more concerning, reading the bids and evaluations for large technology purchases, it appears security is never explicitly evaluated. It's entirely possible you're purchasing multimillion-dollar systems that are vulnerable right out the box. right out the box. Now, I'm not going to stand here and fear monger. You know, I could stand here and, you know, say big words all day long, but, you know, we have organizations like CyberFlorida who are willing to help. You have local TSA chapters that I'm sure would love to learn infrastructure and cooperate. Now, I've been trying to help with issues like this for, you know, a minute now in Polk County. You know, I've sent plenty of emails, dozens of phone calls. I've had physical sit-downs with programmers from the county, but it's all been surface-level. It's just you're playing whack-a-mole with vulnerabilities that you find that pop up that you're inevitably going to find. Now, I'm running out of time here, but if there's anything that you can take away from this, is that if you forget about me in a week, at least I can say I tried to help, and you have options. It's just, I'm going to email away. Sorry. The next speaker.
Thank you.
Oh, Jagger.
What?
I see you.
Are you a student here?
Uh, yes. Where do you go to school?
Lake Gibson High School.
Should he meet with one of our folks?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take him.
Yes.
Ms. Dawson's in the back.
Where's the techies? In the back?
Ms. Dawson.
Ms. Dawson. Okay. Mr. Millhorn?
Larry Millhorn, President, ASME Local 2227. I just wanted to speak. I was in the work session today, and I'm not saying I'm against the Chief of Staff. The only thing, problem I've got at this time is I've seen the budget. I know what's in the budget. I'm not looking favorable seeing stuff for the people I represent. And when I see money being spent, that we may be able to do it in the future when we do have financial stability. And I understand that this position may help us some in the county, organize things and all, but when my people see the amount of money that is spent on higher-up positions -- because I get them calls all the time. When Ms. Byrd got her raise, my phone rang off the hook, you know? And I'm saying her percentage is not more than your percentage, but they don't understand that. They just understand the money that is being spent by the district. When they were shorthanded, maintenance alone, from what DOE says, we're 200 positions short. I'm sure we're going to be short bus drivers when we start school up next, you know? And food, nutrition, we're short. Custodial staff is way understaffed for the work they have to do. They worked hard this summer to get our schools ready. And then when they see the amount of money that this position's going to be, I'm afraid that I'm going to get them calls again, and they're going to say, "Well, where's that big money that the paper said we had $32 million for my raise?" And Mr. Perone tried to explain it in the paper, but when the people saw the end of that and it said $10 million, and he said for raises and benefits, not one person heard the word "benefit" or even read the word "benefit." They heard "raises." And I just want you to agree. I'm not saying this needs to be taken off the shelf or anything. I'm just saying I'm not sure this is the right time to add that position. So, and I want to thank Ms. Clinton because you did have me, and I hope you enjoy your retirement because you've helped me before, and I want to thank you for the things you've done for this district for the years you were here and served us. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Millhorn. And with that, I would invite anyone who would like to come forward and speak to any items related to the school district.
Jimmy Nelson, Lake Wells. And so I hope maybe I can just offer some clarification to what is obviously some confusion. There was evidently a phone call made to the Lake Wells Charter School office sometime yesterday, and it's our understanding that the person that called was looking for Mr. Gibson. Well, Mr. Gibson's office is not at the Lake Wells Charter Schools. So we're also kind of on a skeleton staff right now. A lot of people are gone. Superintendent was not in. The superintendent's secretary was not in. So the person that answered the phone sent the caller to the first person she could get a hold of, and so that's who the person from the Department of Education spoke to, and that's where the information became confused because that is the person that said, I guess, whatever it was about a charter takeover. Each of you have a letter that was sent last week from our new chairman that specifies external operator, not charter takeover. So the intent is external operator, to contract for an external operator agreement, not as a charter takeover. Mr. Gibson was not aware of any of that until today, late today. So, and it was after lunch. In fact, this was going on while you all were in work session. Mr. Gibson sent off a copy of Chairman Gill's letter to the DOE and to Mrs. Ramsey. Mrs. Ramsey called Mr. Gibson back again while you were all in work session today, and Mr. Gibson spent about an hour on the phone with her this afternoon during that time. So it makes perfect sense that the information that Superintendent Byrd has would have been from prior to what took place today. And it's very likely that even if Ms. Ramsey had tried to contact the superintendent this afternoon, she would not have been able to have reached her yet. Hopefully, that helps to clarify.
I think that's very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I... Can we talk about this? No? Or, I'm sorry, there are still people.
If we have some of the folks who'd like to come forward and speak to anything related to the school district, we invite you to do so at this time. Okay? Bishop Mincy?
Speak by peace and get out. I've been with y'all all day. Congratulations to our district for being a B continuous. Let's clap our hand for that. I think about all the good stuff, y'all. We on that other stuff. I was thinking about all that good stuff, and the good stuff is outweighing that other stuff y'all are talking about, but we just going to believe that God is in control and that our district is moving forward. There's a lot of good stuff. I mean, I just listen and been hearing of the things that's going on in our school. Our teachers are excited, and we're going to keep them lifted up, and everybody, you know, I know everybody's concerned about the money. We do need money, but we know what we are dealing with in our area, so many things that people are... Somebody said the word "politics," "political" is somewhat because people don't want to be branded as bringing on taxes and all that kind of stuff, but the Bible said money answers all things, and I believe that. And I believe that we do need funds, and we need the support of people like our legislators to see the importance of doing the things that is right. Our district is so huge, and everybody talks about it, but really, when you think about all the way up by 192 and all the way down, far south, frost-proof, and far over that way and far over that way, it's just a big, big, huge district, and it takes a lot of energy and time. And I appreciate our superintendent just listening to somebody today saying she want to get out there more, and when you call, she's on her job. She's on her job. She's not sitting in the office, but she's trying to get, to make a difference and encourage our young teachers and everybody. I mean, she's trying to do all that, and I think that's all that stuff that's to be committed. And board members, I want you all to bear that in your mind and keep that in your heart and forefront, that what you're doing is good work. Amen. Sometimes you might hit some bumps in the road, but work with the bump and keep on going because it's going to take all of that to get where we're trying to go. And I believe that if we do that, we're going to come to that place that, when it happens, amen, I'm going to do a dance in here, amen, because I believe God would be deserving of the praise, amen, to allow our district, amen, to be successful because there are so many wants it not to be successful. There are people that really hate us, and we live in that kind of world and that kind of society, whether we want to face it or not. But I believe that if we work together, as you have been doing and continue to work together, I think that we will see all of the things that we want to have happen and that our children is first, and that our district will be a prosperous district. God bless you tonight. I'm on my way out.
Thank you, Bishop Mincy, and thank you for staying with us all day today. We appreciate it. We do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Mr. Townsend, you had some comments?
First, I want to thank Jagger for coming. He... I actually encouraged him to come after making sure he consulted with his parents, which he did do, I assume. Correct? Yes. You know, he's been in contact off and on really since Focust came online, and I've directed him multiple times to our IT staff, and I think he's done some very useful things from what I understand. I'm not sophisticated enough to honestly, to evaluate it. I think we should take him seriously. We should take serious, seriously what he's saying, and I would encourage, you know, maybe at the next work session to have kind of a brief update on security and what we're doing and what... I mean, I noticed there were some things on the agenda today even related to security, but I'd like to hear what our philosophy is, what our concerns are. So I think that would be a good thing to do. Concerning the Lake Wells issue, I, first of all, there's like seven different Lake Wells issues, but let's start first of all, Robin Gibson is my cousin.
Mr. Townsend, before you start, could I ask Mr. Bridges a question? Mr. Bridges, could we adjourn the meeting and then leave it open to the public to have the discussion about McLaughlin?
I would suggest to you that if you're going to have a discussion as the school board of Polk County, you do it at a noticed meeting. Right now, you're in a noticed meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You adjourn the meeting, I think you step outside the sunshine.
Thank you. Okay. I apologize, Mr. Townsend. Please.
Yeah, just for the public's knowledge, Robin Gibson is my cousin. My grandmother and his mother were sisters. He was at my daughter's wedding. Take all of that into consideration. I... The first issue is whether Lake Wells can be an external operator or not. I will need to see something on pay, either way, from the Department of Education, not from our staff, not from y'all. I want to see somebody from DOE say, "This is what Lake Wells can do right now." I want to see that from the Department of Education, somebody who will take responsibility for that. Secondly, I would like to have a board-to-board meeting at which we talk to the Lake Wells Charter Board, and they talk to us, to see if we can come up with some sort of agreed-to framework for a long-term vision for how we collaborate out there or what Lake Wells looks like. And it may be that we can't agree, but I would like to be able to talk board-to-board because I feel like most of the discussions we've had have not been board-to-board. They've been staff-to-staff or in forums, and I don't think that's always been very helpful. You know, I have some pretty specific suggestions that we don't have to go into here, but I think the first is, are there four board members here who are willing to have that meeting? Because if there are, let's... If there's not, let's go ahead and establish that. If there is, let's take the next up.
I'm open.
I'm open. Yeah, absolutely.
I think that we've talked about this several times.
Okay. All right. Okay, good. So, I mean, then my suggestion would be that we schedule it on a Saturday where nobody's got the pressure of the day, where we can really sit down and talk. I would also suggest that we maybe spend the first few hours of it without the lawyers present, no offense, or maybe even staff, just board-to-board, community-to-community about what we would like to see, what's possible that we agree on, and then we can vet that through lawyers and staff after, you know? That's just my suggestion, and I'm open to what anybody else has to say.
Ms. Cunningham?
I would agree. I think this has been an issue that we've discussed among our communities for a while now, and it would be nice to come to a resolution. The recent information that we had, which is why I said let's talk afterwards, and I quote, is that Lake Wells Charter Schools were not vetted as an external operator by the DOE, so they could not be considered to be, to help with McLaughlin. So that's really where we were at as of noon today or when we started today at 12:30. So, and we were told you were only interested in the conversion piece and the takeover and all that. Okay. So you've updated us on some new information, which we've not had, and hence why I didn't respond to your letter because I wanted to make sure I had my information correct before I did. So I agree, we can sit down and talk. What I don't know is timelines. There are timelines, very, very specific timelines that superintendent is under that have to be formulated and given to the state. Quite frankly, since I'm not staff, I don't know what those timelines are. We were simply told that we are moving in that direction and that the two external operators that the district is going to be interviewing were happening, I believe, this week or next week or a little bit of both, something like that, because we have a stringent timeline. So I'm not sure personally what the information you've given us tonight, how that changes the scenario, because you just gave it to us, and I quite frankly don't know the implications. So I would prefer, I agree with Mr. Townsend long-term, but I think for this issue, I think it's a matter of us figuring out with superintendent and allowing superintendent, maybe the superintend... I don't know, to discuss this, to try to figure out, is there an option? And if so, we interview you and we choose and move on, and if there isn't an option, then we all know there wasn't an option, and we move on. I mean, we're kind of there because we're really at the very timeline right now. So to get together and have board-to-board and have all... I think that's a great option, but I just don't think we have the time. I'll be very honest with you. I just, if she's got to make... She's interviewing candidates this week and trying to make a decision. How do... I think yours is more the long-term zoning and all the other issues. Do you feel that is correct, or am I wrong?
No, no, you're right. I mean, but let me clarify what I meant. When I said I need to see something in writing from DOE, I meant like tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
If, you know, if there is...
Yes.
If that's going to be a possibility...
Yes.
That possibility needs to be made clear and not a subject of debate.
Of debate. So the question is, how do we get that?
And I'm not committing to that. I just want to know what's possible.
Right. So how do we get that? Who tells the DOE we want a letter like eight yesterday? I know, that's why I'm smiling.
And let me clarify, and I agree with everything Ms. Cunningham just said, but let me clarify, where we're at right now is we, the DOE effectively has identified specific external operators. The question is, can we add your name to that list?
Right.
And how quickly can we do that?
Can we do it.
So, and that's what Mr. Townsend is saying. Let's, we need to see that list. And with that, I'm going to invite Superintendent Byrd to offer some comments.
Mr. Chair, the plan that the Commission approved when we presented was for an external operator. There are some external operators that the State Board has already looked at, that they're approving. Our plan is to go back to them as an amendment, not to be presented, because we just have, if we're selecting one of the ones that they are already looking at, that they have vetted based on the standards that they're looking at with those external operators, it's going back. So yes, we are interviewing a second external operator tomorrow. I have informed DOE that I will have the amendment to them. Their meeting is coming up in a couple of weeks, so they have to have that information back. We got 30 days to return that information back to them on an external operator.
Yes.
For our district.
Yes, for our district.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And as you know, I was there. So I understand that the DOE has approved a plan, and the only part of that that they did not approve was the original external operator. So we have to identify one. And I want to share my thoughts on this. I know everybody knows where I stand, but when we first talked about this, we had an arrangement with Ed Directions, Educational Directions, and as part of that arrangement, Superintendent Byrd had control of McLaughlin. They were simply there in a resource capacity. And while I don't know Educational Directions, I don't know other external operators, I know our superintendent, and I trusted her to do the job she needed to do. But that's changed now. They are no longer part of the equation, and whatever external operator we bring in will have absolute and complete control. I don't know those folks. I don't know what the record is. I mean, I can look at their statistics, but I don't know them. I know the Lake Wells community. And if, in my opinion, if they can be added as one of the possible external operators, I think that, in my opinion, that would be our option because we know them, they're part of our community. These other folks will have absolute control. We, Ed Directions, didn't have that, but they will, and that concerns me considerably. So that's where I stand on it. That's my take on it, and I hope that perhaps, I'm hoping that the Lake Wells community can get on that list and that we can consider them as well. Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller?
I just want to concur with the chairman and that's kind of what we've talked about in the past. Before I even was on the board, this has been, you know, maybe possibly coming, it could come. But the Department of Education really changed the game when they took that last, what the plan was and decided to remove who we had chosen at the time. So, yes, this seems like a different plan that now we're looking at two new ones. I agree to have some, you know, out-of-state possibly company come in that has no vested interest in this community. I would rather see our school and our students of Lake Wales taken care of by their own people, by their own town, our community, just like we do for all the other students in Polk County. So, with that timeline, I'm hoping we can make progress with having that alternative to the outside operators.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Reynolds?
A point of clarification with Ms. Byrd, are, my understanding was that the contract with the new external operator will be very similar to Ed Directions in the sense that you will maintain control, they are just there for support.
Yes, my light was on. I was going to do some clarification. I want to make sure that we know that McLaughlin was not upon an external operator last year with Educational Directions. That was not an external. Yes, there will be collaboration and that was one of the things that the board encouraged was to have collaboration with the new external operator and the district at this time. And the ones that they have actually looked at with the high success rates, that's what they've had. So, they're in collaboration fully with the districts.
Thank you. It appeared at the State Board of Education meeting that their board scolded a couple other districts that were using the external operator as the sole operator. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's correct.
Additionally, I will not support using Lake Wales as the external operator for a few reasons. I think if you truly wanted to turn around McLaughlin, that you would not have hired their principal during testing season. That, I think, was a little bit of sabotage and set them up for failure. I think on top of that, I said, it's been probably a year ago now, that I would not encourage or vote to expand the Lake Wales Charter footprint until I had gone at least three years without receiving a notice from a parent that they live in Lake Wales and could not get into one of the historically zoned schools that are now conversion charter schools. That clock reset on June 17th at 12, sorry, that was the second email, 11:55 a.m. So, that's, you know, if I could go three months without getting an email from a parent that they can't get into a charter school in their community, I would be thrilled. So, I, no matter what the scenario is, will not be supporting Lake Wales as the external operator. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fortney?
Oh, yeah, I've had my light on there for a little bit. Well, you know, I see both sides of that and what Ms. Reynolds said is exactly what I've heard. But I look at it this way, charter schools are public schools and they're all our kids. And that's kind of how I look at the whole picture. You know, and I support the six through 12 arts out there for that side of the county. I just think we could work together on that and provide that side of the county an arts program comparable to the northeast and to the west. So, those kids have that opportunity. So, and that's the plan, right Superintendent Byrd?
That was the plan presented to the board.
Yes, ma'am.
That has to come back for approval, yes.
So, that, you know, if we could work together with them on that, that would be great, but that's my only comment.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. And I just want to go on record too that obviously if Lake Wales Charter system becomes on the list from the DOE that is one of the external operators that we could choose, I would 100% support that for several reasons. Number one, who better knows the Lake Wales community than the charter school system and the people that live and work in that community? Secondly, as Ms. Fortney indicated, the arts are alive and well in Lake Wales as demonstrated by our beautiful art center that we have there. And I think the collaboration between the art center and McLaughlin could take it in many, many forward directions. And thirdly, this has been a long-going discussion by a lot of people for a lot of number of years and I'm simply going to say it's been divisive in our community. And I think anything at all that we can do to try to bring the Lake Wales community together as a whole would be a plus. And having McLaughlin served by members of its own community and folks that some of those kids may know and recognize from church or grocery store or whatever, football, Little League, there's just so many tentacles out there. I think it would be, it would serve our community best. So, I hope that whatever you've provided to them is something that we're going to be able to look at to make an intelligent decision moving forward with our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah. So, I guess, trying to think logistically about this. You know, Superintendent, can I ask, what are the names of the two external operators that we're interviewing?
The one is EMCS. Is that the correct name? That's the second one we're doing. And we did LSI.
And those are, they've been totally states action. They're-
Yes, they have actually been approved by DOE.
I mean, from the superintendent's point of view, she's charged with establishing a turnaround plan and external operator and has a clock that's ticking on that. Again, I would, I think it would behoove Lake Wales, you guys, to follow up with DOE, get something in writing, send it to all of us about what is possible specific to the external operator option. I would, you know, I'd have to look at the nature of the proposal. I mean, the timeline makes me uncomfortable. Like, I mean, it's fast, it's throwing something together. But I also am sympathetic to the benefits of having the connection to who runs the high school there. So, you know, the first step is to establish that you're eligible to do it. And then you put the onus on us to vote. I mean, I would, you know, you make us vote up or down on it. Secondly, from there, whether, again, I say this over and over and over and over again, the McLaughlin issue should not wag the Lake Wales dog. It is a subset of the much larger community divide out there, which is built around some of what Sarah Bus talking about, which is, which is why I want to have, you know, why I think, I think the whole board expressed the willingness to have that meeting. Whether or not the external operator thing works, that doesn't change my point of view on a long-term solution to this that I think is built around something that's equitable for everybody. And I hope that one doesn't define the other. So, I guess, I'm sorry, just kind of thinking out loud. If you guys can clarify what DOE says you can do through DOE, like with a letter that's sent to the superintendent and the board, that's what I would recommend you do, one that's signed by somebody from DOE, not one of you. And then if we can set the joint meeting as soon as possible to begin thinking about what's possible, I think that that's the second track. There's like two tracks here. So, anyway.
Madam Superintendent?
Mr. Chair, I want to remind the board that any time an external operator is presented by a school district, it is presented before the State Board of Education who approves that external. They have approved some external operators, this external, if they qualify, if even Lake Wales was qualified, they have not been presented before the State Board of Education, so therefore not approved. The next meeting, we have to make sure we have an addendum prior to that with an approved external operator. So, I want the board to understand that because we have to go and present before the State Board for them to say, "Yes, they will approve that external operator."
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Are there any other, any other comments from the board members? Any further discussion? If there is none, this meeting is adjourned.